The regular meeting of the Bellevue Zoning Board of Adjustment for April 5, 2018 will now come to order. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso.
Here.
Giannano.
Here.
Casa.
Here.
Lozoff.
Here.
Lambucci.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Smith.
Valano.
Yeah.
Del Gersio.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam Secretary, has this notice of this meeting been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law?
Certification of meeting has been advertised according to the Sunshine Law.
Okay. Has everybody reviewed the minutes from last month?
Yes.
Any amendments or anything?
No.
Motion made by Mr. Caruso to approve?
Stand.
Seconded by Mr. Valano. Clerk Colerole.
Caruso. Giannano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lozoff.
Yes.
Lambucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valano.
Yes.
Del Gersio.
Yes. Applications for adjournment. Applications for special meeting, whatever.
I had some applications for adjournments. I figured in already, Mr. Chairman.
We have letters here. Hold on, let me get the letters. Pull the cookies out of it, that's right. Pull the cookies out of it. All right. Okay. Let's do one at a time. Let's do Rutgers Street first. Yes, let's do 37 Rutgers Street first. Number two on the agenda, ZB 2017-18. Applicant is proposing to add retail to auto parts to an existing warehouse. That's 33-37 Rutgers Street, owned by the Parts Authority or run by the Parts Authority. Okay, this is dated April 3, 2018. Relation JAMSO Limited Liability Company or Corporation also being traded as Parts Authority. 33-37 Rutgers Street blocks 9402, blocks 2, 3, 4, and 5. Ms. Chickarelli, I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above matter. We are requesting that the application for JAMSO Limited Liability Corporation or Company, whichever it is, presently scheduled to be heard at the April 5, 2018 meeting by the Bellevue Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until May 3, 2018 meeting. The adjournment is being requested due to revisions to the plans being necessary following last month's meeting, which have not been completed. And additional, as additional variances have been noted as required, a fresh legal notice will be published and also mailed to property owners within 200 feet as required prior to the next hearing date. In consideration for this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for the duration of the adjournment requested. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance in connection with this request. Michael J. Palomari of the law firm Ogashion and Pamako. Okay, so anybody in the audience that's interested in this case, it will be adjourned to our next meeting at May 3, 2018. There will be notices in the newspaper and by mail because of the change, but that's about it. So that is adjourned to May 3. Okay. Next one on the agenda is... Thanks, Thomas. Next on the agenda is 450-52 Washington Avenue. That is dated April 3 also, I believe. Yes. And it states 450-52 Washington Associates LP. 452 Washington Avenue, block 8905, lots 7 and 8. Mrs. Chickarelli, I am writing to respectfully request an adjournment with regard to the above-captured matter. We are requesting that the application for 450-52 Washington Associates LP presently scheduled to be heard at the April 5, 2018 meeting of the Bellevue Zoning Board of Adjustment be adjourned until the May 3, 2018 meeting. The adjournment is being requested due to our client and applicant being unable to attend at the April 5, 2018 meeting. As legal notice has already been provided, in connection with this application, we respectfully request the Chairman of the Bellevue Zoning Board of Adjustment permit the adjournment to the May 3, 2018 meeting without further notice or an appearance on behalf of the applicant. In consideration for this adjournment request, the applicant agrees to suspend any and all applicable time limits for municipal action for the duration of the adjournment request. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance in this matter. Michael J. Palomari, Esquire of the law firm Ogashion and Pamako. I assume that he's going to provide the notices that night?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, he'll provide the notices in the next.
Tonight can do that, though. Okay, next case. I believe there's no other cases for adjournment, but there's a request for a special meeting. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. The number 6, ZB-2018-04, 548-568 Franklin Avenue, was noticed for tonight. Everybody was noticed on the agenda properly. We supplied with the secretary, board secretary, with the requisite affidavit. And because we have four experts whose schedules need to converge for the night of the hearing, we were unable to get them together tonight. They're all over the place. Who's testifying somewhere? Who's on another board? We were hoping to do this on the 13th of April, which was a date that was given to us by the board secretary. Possible availability, so all to be determined tonight.
The 13th.
Next week.
That's a Friday night. Do we have enough time to give notice in advance for a special meeting? Because she still has to do that on the Land Use Law.
Yes, there's plenty of time. She noticed for tonight. Whatever we adjourned it to, we would notice it. And then, probably that's all that's needed. If you didn't want something in paper, you can do it with...
But we can do that. We're fine. Okay. All right, everybody have a problem with the 13th?
Not at the moment.
You can't be here on the 13th. You can't be here on the 13th. Do we have another date? Is there another date? Because we already have two members out of the way that can't be here. And this is going to be a deapplication.
We had several dates that were given to us. Regrettably, again, the experts are out testifying out of the board, so we're going to have to go into May.
Have all those dates?
Yes, yeah, we tried. There are four of them plus my schedule. That's five of us.
It's a nine- letter board.
Yeah, because you already have two gone, and you have one that you don't know if it's going to show up or not. So you can never find. Three gone, three gone. So what are you going to do? You might have four gone, so then you're going to have to have five out of five? No, I don't think that's a good idea.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we'll go into May with some special dates, so I can contact the secretary tomorrow.
Yeah, she'll find out the special dates for May.
And can we carry, how do we do this, so I don't have to re-notice?
Well, you can carry it over right now.
Why don't we carry it? My suggestion would be to carry it to the May...
Perfect.
Third.
To the May 3 meeting.
Right.
That way, with no further notice, that way on May 3, we can have a special meeting
later on in May.
I will likely be overseas that day, but I'll send someone to, I'll send a colleague to discuss the adjournment.
Well, when you send a colleague, he's going to have to know if the dates that we have available are going to be good.
Absolutely, absolutely. We do that in advance.
Okay. All right, so let's do these two. ZB 2017-24, which was 450-52 Washington Avenue. The applicant was seeking a variance to renovate the interior of an existing two and a one-half dwelling to a three-unit multifamily dwelling. There will be no further notice either in the newspaper or by mail for that case. That's being carried over to May 3, 2018. And ZB 2018-04, that's number 6 on the agenda, 548-568 Franklin Avenue, Sound Development LLC. The applicant is proposing to build a mixed-use multifamily and retail on the premises. That is also adjourned to May 3, 2018, and there'll be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper for that case. Okay. And then, well, yes, well, that's where we get there. Okay, so the first case on the agenda for tonight, ZB 2018-02. The applicant is seeking for a variance to have an existing shed remain in the backyard at 63-67 Brighton Avenue. The owner is Jana Serna.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, number 8 on your agenda is communications. I think you normally take that next, do you not?
We usually take that last.
Last, fine, no problem. My apologies.
We didn't want to forget you, no one.
I'll prepare then with regard to the Brighton Avenue case, if you want me to.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, council's name is Robert Gassion, the firm is Gassion and Pamako, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant, Jana Serna, and Renaissance Building, INC. Jana Serna owns 63-67 Brighton, which property is in an RC or multifamily zone. It's an application for bulk variance relief in order to allow two existing accessory structures to remain where they are currently located. The accessory structures are two sheds which violate the side yard and rear yard setback requirements. The witnesses you'll hear from are General Zahra of Renaissance Building, Inc., the former owner, and Anthony Marucci, the engineer and planner. I'd like to call Mr. Zahra as my first witness.
Raise your right hand, please. With regard to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give shall bear the truth.
I do.
And let me state for the record, when I reviewed, that I reviewed, notice publication appeared to be...
Hold on one second, Mr. Chairman. Hold on.
It's my understanding, Mr. Gassion, that one of our board members should do your client at the business quite some time ago?
Yes.
That there's been nothing...
I have no objection.
Nor do I. So she can...
But actually, she can be up here, but she's the second alternate, and right now it looks like she won't be open anymore. Okay? As long as you have no problem with her sitting up here.
Not at all.
Okay. Proceed.
What's your home address, Mr. Zahra?
22 James Street, East Dale, New Jersey.
And are you the former owner of 63-67 Brighton Avenue?
Yes, I am.
Can you explain to the board when you bought that property and what the circumstances were at the time of your acquisition?
I purchased the property in May of 2017, and it was a foreclosed property in need of repair.
And did you then, after that purchase at foreclosure, contact the zoning office and do certain work in order to rectify problems at the site?
Yes, I did.
And did there come a time when, after rectifying some or most of the problems, you put the property up for sale?
Yes, I did.
And at the time of putting the property up for sale, were you able to obtain a permanent certificate of occupancy for the buyer?
I was able to obtain, I believe, a temporary because of sheds that were on the property.
And at that time, that you determined that there was an issue with sheds and that you couldn't get a permanent certificate of occupancy, did you then contact my office in order to file an application?
Yes, I did.
And in view of the fact that you couldn't get a permanent C.O., you were able to get a temporary? Did you close with that temporary C.O.?
Yes, I did.
And it was subject to an application being made with regard to the sheds?
That's correct.
I have no further questions with regard to this application.
Any questions, gentlemen, in the board? Mr. Valano?
He bought with the sheds, correct?
Yes.
Any of the renovations you did, did they have to do with the sheds or not?
No renovations with the sheds.
Any repairs have to do with the sheds?
No, I did not.
And the sheds were there when you bought it?
That's correct.
When you bought it, did you get a C.O.?
Yes, I did. I got a temporary C.O. with many violations.
Oh, okay.
But again, you bought that foreclosure shed.
Right, and he got a, he got a C.O. on temporary, many violations, including the sheds?
Well, you got the C.O. I would assume after repurchase, I don't even get the C.O.
Prior to...
You got prior to?
I bought the, it was a bank property that I bought.
Yeah, I get it.
So I went for a temporary C.O., and I was issued a temporary C.O. And part of the violations or whatever was on the temporary C.O., they were illegally using the basement as an apartment, and there was an eviction process. I had to close, I had to take them to court. So it was a lengthy process.
Well, that was done except for two sheds.
That is correct.
Would that be a fair statement?
Excuse me?
Would that be a fair statement? All the other violations were resolved except the sheds.
That is 100% correct.
Mr. DiLorenzo, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, no further questions.
Just wanted to clarify, I had a misunderstanding. I thought my client had bought the foreclosure shed, and therefore he didn't get the C.O. till after. He obviously explained that he bought from a bank and got the C.O. before with all that list of problems.
I get it. No confusion here.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have since solved the problem.
Since solved. Is the new owner here tonight?
She is.
Okay.
Also with a temporary C.O., correct?
Temporary C.O.
Same, same stats.
I just want to make sure.
But all their problems have been resolved but for the two, the sub-sheds.
If I may ask one question, Mr. Chairman, follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
Have there been any complaints regarding the sheds?
No, sir.
Any that you know of?
Not that I know of.
Okay, that's it.
Excuse me, I'm neglected to ask you, spell your last name, please.
C is in zebra, A R R A.
And your first name again for the record?
Is J E R E L, Gerald.
Thank you.
That's it.
Before we go further, I'd like to swear in Mr. DiLorenzo and ask him a question based upon my inspection of the board.
Frank, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, with regard to this application and any other applications, you swear the testimony you're about to give shall bear the truth.
Yes.
And for the record, Frank DiLorenzo, zoning officer.
I want to ask Frank, if he concurs with what I saw, that both of those sheds, one are to the extreme left and one is to extreme right in the backyard, have been there, it looks like, for a while. Am I correct?
Yes.
And I believe the one on the right has electric connected to it. I'm not sure about the one on the left, but I saw electric connected to the one on the right.
My client is nodding, he said there's electric connected to the right of the sheds.
Not to the left, not the one...
It's to the right.
It's the one to the right, I'm correct. Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have.
And I guess, so Frank, I guess my statements are, my questions to you before, when I don't know, are still the same, right?
What sample?
The questions regarding, that I asked you before, because I know now they swore you in. The answers are still the same, right?
Correct.
And one other question, Frank. Is there any other permitting required after this?
Yes, they have to come to the office.
Okay, great. That's what I want.
Okay. Any other member of the board have a question of the witness, based upon testimony? Any member of the public have a question of a witness, based on testimony? None. You may call your next witness.
Mr. Marucci.
Yes, we scored you.
With regard to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give shall bear the truth.
I do.
State your name and your last name, please.
Anthony Marucci, M.A.R.U.C.C.I. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Marucci is here to serve as a professional engineer and a planner. He's been before the board numerous times. I would be happy to qualify him, but I thought maybe to expedite this kind of case.
No, as long as he hasn't lost his license, he's okay.
Mr. Marucci, you're still a licensed engineer in St. New Jersey? Yes, I am. And you still hold your license as a planner? Yes, I do.
Now, am I correct in assuming this is a C, not a deapplication?
It is, it is.
So technically, a planning testimony is not necessarily...
Not necessary, but he's going to get just a little bit.
Just asking.
Be a little engineerial plan.
Very good.
Mr. Marucci, just briefly, review the location of the property. The property is located at 63-67 Brighton Avenue. It's also numbered as block 506, lot 15. And what is the zoning at the site? The zone is RC multifamily. And would you describe the existing site, just briefly, in particular with regard to the accessories, features? Well, it's an RC multifamily zone, but the site is a single-family home. And there are, actually, I'll say, three accessory structures in the rear, two sheds and a gazebo.
Yes.
The gazebo does not require any variances, it's just the two sheds. And would you discuss the location of the sheds? Sure. On my plan, which is dated...
Mr. Marucci, I'm assuming that looks to be the same thing that we have.
It's exactly the same, but yes.
All right, we don't need to mark that.
My plan, my plan is dated December 22, 2017, with a revision date of, I'm sorry, January 19, 2018. On my plan is a copy of the current survey of the property and a few photographs that my office took. The sheds are in the rear of the property. First of all, the property has a unique shape. It's not rectangular. There's a cutout in the rear on the right side that juts in, so that the property has an irregular shape to it. Shed A is actually snuggled into that corner on that side, and Shed B is on the left side, right in the corner of the property. They're basically almost on the property line, and that's why the needs for the variances. Shed A has a side yard of basically zero, where four feet is required, a rear yard of 1.5 because of that jug out, where four is required. And your ordinance also requires that it has to be a minimum of 10 feet from the existing dwelling, and it scales to about nine feet. So those are the variances for Shed A. Shed B has a side yard of 0.2 feet, where four is required, and a rear yard of 0.35 feet, where four is required. So those are the variances that we require. What is the condition of these two sheds? I actually, and you can see from the photographs, I actually was able to go inside the sheds. They have regular man doors on them with locks on them. These sheds were constructed, in my opinion, professionally. These were not something that was bought and put there. They were constructed by someone that knew what he was doing, and they've been there a long time, in my opinion. I can't guess a date, though. I'm talking years. This is not something that was just put up. And as the chairman asked, Shed A does have electricity in it. There's an actual circuit box in inside, and they're in great shape.
There's actually also an outside box, if you're correct.
I really didn't notice it.
You didn't notice that? That's how I understood it, was electricity.
And they're vinyl sided with a regular roof on, so they're in very good shape.
They're in very good shape.
Is one of them basically against the neighbor's garage? Yes, and Shed A, again, if you look at the photographs, you can see, we took the photograph where you can see the shed and the adjacent garage to the right of it. And that garage is less than four feet tall, so that garage is only about 1.8 feet away from the property line. So they kind of buffer each other. And are they sheds that could easily be moved? No. And you mentioned the shape of the property. It is odd in shape, is it not? Not deep and has jog in it? Yes, it does. And that's, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Well, that's where I believe the C1 criteria comes into play here as far as variance relief in terms of a hardship because of the shape of the property. If the sheds had to be moved, or when I say moved, you probably would have to knock them down and rebuild them, they'd end up almost in the middle of the yard, and that would take away open space that I believe the residents really want, that they're in need. Is there a parking issue in this neighborhood, and what's the situation with this property? This is a single-family home, and it requires two parking spaces. It has a one-car garage and only enough room for one parking space in front of it. So that's the other reason why these sheds are important for storage space, because the garage and the parking space are needed for the, to meet the parking requirement. So, and I spoke to the new homeowner. The new homeowner has young children, so they need the storage space for bicycles, lawnmower equipment, things like that. And is this actually a less intense use than is in this neighborhood, in the fact it is a multifamily neighborhood? Oh, without a doubt, because the neighborhood, when you pass this house to the left, it's mostly apartment buildings, multifamily apartment. And you indicated that the C1 applies here. Is there also a possibility that C2 applies here? The C2 applies also. Again, this is a specific piece of property, and under the C2 criteria, I believe that a couple of purposes of municipal land use law can be applied. Purpose C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Again, the sheds, being where they are, provides that adequate light, air, and open space for this property, so it can be enjoyed by the homeowners. And it also provides for desirable visual environment. So again, the location of the sheds provides that buffering and provides that open area. I have no further questions, Mr. Witness. Oh, yeah, no further questions.
Sure. I hope you're sure. Well, you may have follow-up questions. There can be us questions. Let me ask you a question. If the applicant was forced to move the sheds, it could cause damage that the sheds could not be, would you say, saved? Because of the foundation, I mean, the foundation, you have to remember, is delicate. It's been there so long.
It's delicate, and again, the way these were constructed, you cannot physically move them that easily. It's not like a shed that you purchase in a Home Depot or a place like that.
I agree.
And just placed on a different foundation. So that would be another hardship, yes, in my opinion.
Okay, any questions by members of the board? Mr. Marucci?
It's not really a question, it's more of a comment. Yes, the sheds look like they've been there for a while. However, on the 2007 rebound, there's no record of the sheds being there. So, but that is still making 11 years old.
I was going to guess 10 years myself, but they look like they've been there a long time, yes.
Any other members of the board have a question?
I have just one question.
Go ahead.
With Shed A, which is budding the neighbor's garage, it looks like the neighbor's garage has gutters on it, but Shed A doesn't have any gutters. Is there any possible flooding issue here with the runoff from Shed A just flowing upstream onto the property for the neighboring garage?
I don't see any problem. Again, it's been like this for a long time, and no one has made an issue of it, so I don't see a problem.
Plus, everybody was noticing, the 200 street included, the person, the adjacent. Any other questions by members of the board? Questions by members of the public? None?
Very brief summation, I have no further witnesses.
No further witnesses?
No.
That's it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this has been there a long time. It's very beneficial in that this is a congested area, a multifamily area. It gives the owner of this property a place to store things, and therefore they can keep a car in the garage and a car behind the garage. That's beneficial to my client, and it's beneficial to the neighborhood. The location of these sheds are against other things, a multifamily and a garage. The shape of the property is odd, and therefore a C1 applies. And if you were ever to put these sheds in the middle of the property and not have a violation, you basically ruin the rear yard. It's a better use of the backyard the way it's set up. Again, it's been there a long time. It's firm, it's built in. Moving it is almost impossible. You'd have to basically destroy it to move it.
I think that this is C2 because it benefits everybody. It's a zoning benefit to keep all of what they have in these sheds and not have to put it in their garage, and therefore maybe leave their car out of the garage and then the hunting for a space on the street. It's a C1 because of the unique shape of the property. I think this is the kind of belief that cries out to be approved. I think it's beneficial. I think it's the kind of thing we need to do. To force these people to tear the shed down, or these sheds down, really not gonna accomplish anything. Nobody's here complaining, it's not hurting anybody's property, and again, I thank the board for their time.
There is one question I forgot to ask. And then, is this anybody in the audience wish to give testimony on this application? I wanna make sure I don't mess up the case. Okay, then I leave it up to the board for their discretion.
I'll second it with a conditional average, that they're finding all adequate permits, Frank.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. Caruso, seconded by Mr. Valano, with the condition that all permits be complied with based upon Mr. Di Lorenzo's request. Any problems with that, Mr. Gassion?
No, sir.
Okay, Madam Secretary, everyone is to be called except Ms. Lozlo.
Caruso. Caruso.
Yes.
Giannina.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Mafucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Calano. Del Gersio.
Yes. Approved seven to nothing.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, committee members.
Okay, now, next case on the agenda would be ZB two thousand seventeen dash twenty-one. Three twenty, three eighty-two Bellevle Avenue. The applicant is seeking for a variance to convert the first floor of an existing mixed-use dwelling to a lawyer's office. Destroy his name again, too. Chialafulo.
Chiafulo.
Chiafulo, thank you. Three eighty-two Bellevle Properties LLC. I have a question of Mr. Di Lorenzo on this before we even get started. And that is, aren't professional, is this a one-family zone?
Whatever my letter says, Jack. No.
RC.
RC.
It's a multifamily zone.
A multifamily zone. Now, everything in a multifamily zone, does not everything from a one-family zone also comply in a multifamily zone?
No, not anymore, that was the old.
Well, that was the old rule. Because I remembered that professional officers could be, as long as they're on the first floor.
I don't, I don't, they, they had to live there and all that stuff, that's in the one-family zone.
Yes, also, this person's not gonna live there.
He does not live there.
Okay, then now explains, I just wanted to clear that up before we got started. Okay, then we'll hear this case next. Mr. Gassion, your case, too?
It is, then you're, then you're rid of before the evening. Except for that, the communication.
Notice the publication, come on.
Thank you.
Okay, that's Mark A. One for evidence.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, counsel's name is Robert Cassion, firm Cassion Palaco, five twenty-four Union Avenue, Bellevle. I represent the applicant in this matter, Chiafulo, three eighty-two Bellevle Properties LLC. The owner of three eighty-two Bellevle Avenue, which to most of us, at least the older ones of us, this location was known as the zigzag restaurant and bar. And I might have frequented it a few times in my years. This is an application to convert the first floor of the existing mixed-use building to a lawyer's office. The property is in the RC multifamily zone, and the office use is not permitted in the multifamily zone. Therefore, it is a D variance, and in fact, in this situation, there are two D variances. One, the fact that it's not permitted, and two, the fact that it's two principal uses on the property, and I think the board all knows that there is pending legislation in front of the governing body to change that to allow three principal uses on a piece of property, but I don't believe it's been passed yet. So this still is a variance.
Hasn't been passed by the council yet, yes.
Correct. We also need a parking variance, and again, in the fact, there's the area that's been there forever, and that's all there is. Actually, the proposed use creates substantially less parking demand than the zigzag or any of the successors to the zigzag would have required. When you hear from the witness, you'll see that he has a very modest law practice in the way of client contact at this location.
Can I ask a question? About a year ago, two years ago, wasn't there a law firm there on the first floor? I remember the sign, sorry.
My client has owned it for a while, and he may, he has at times used that and been there, but he doesn't see.
Am I right, Frank?
That's why they're here, yeah.
He doesn't see many clients there. When he gets up, he'll understand what he does.
Okay.
So you're gonna hear from Mr. Chiafulo, the owner of the property, who wants to establish his law practice there. You're gonna hear from the architect, and you're going to hear from, that's Frank Malato, of course, and you're gonna hear from the planner, George Williams. I'd like to get right into the case, you call Mr. Chiafulo.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give, shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your names and by your last name, please.
First name's Christopher, last name is Chiafulo. C is in Charlie, H I L, F is in Frank, U L L O as in Oscar.
Thank you.
Mr. Chiafulo, what's your home address?
Six ninety-six, you caught me really quickly. Six ninety-six Jewett Avenue, Staten Island, New York, one oh three one four.
And what is your occupation?
I am an attorney.
And are you the owner of three eighty-two Bellevle Avenue?
Well, three eighty-two Chiafulo Properties owns it, I am the managing member, yes.
That's when you have a lawyer answering questions.
Sorry, yes, I own the property, yes, I do.
For how long have you owned the property?
Two thousand and five, we bought it.
And how was it used when you acquired the property, the first floor?
It was the zigzag.
And?
Restaurant and bar.
How are the upper floors used?
There are four apartments upstairs.
And what is it you're before the board this evening seeking to do?
Change the first floor from a restaurant bar to my law office, one of my law offices.
And can you explain to the board what your, the unique kind of law you practice?
I am an attorney who helps people get a federal firearms license if they wanna sell firearms to the public. There are very few of us in this world, and I travel an awful lot. I don't see a lot of clients in my office. I have one hundred thousand miles per year on an airplane. And that's all I do. So I'm really the world's most useless attorney unless you want a federal firearms license.
I wouldn't be representing him if he was competitive.
You've got a lot of frequent flyer miles.
I do, I do, and Marriott points as well.
If this application were to be approved, what would be the greatest number of employees you would have at the site?
Employees, so one, two.
Two. So there'd be you and two employees, or do you have a lawyer that works with you?
Nope, me and two employees.
And what would the hours of operation be?
Monday through Friday, ten AM until four or five PM.
And?
You got a spot for me?
You won't like to pay. You explained how you travel frequently.
I do.
And how frequently would you be in the office?
A couple of days a week.
And have you ever gotten complaints from any of your tenants with regard to ability to park their vehicles?
Never once.
And is there street parking usually available at this location?
Plenty.
And where in particular do you find that there's street parking?
On Bellevle Avenue, right in front of the building, leading over into my next-door neighbor's, in front of my next-door neighbor's property. And also on Garden Avenue, just past the apron of the driveway that leads into the parking lot behind the zigzag.
And you also have parking, you also have parking in the rear of the building?
Yes, we do.
And have you found that your tenants who are there a while seem to be able to work things out to be able to park in the spots when they want to?
Yes, they are all, they're community spots, for lack of better words, and all the tenants get along and decide who's parking where and when. And they all get out of the way when it's time for me to have a pleasant.
I have no further questions, Mr. Williams.
Just repeat the last statement, the last statement you made.
The tenants are cooperative when it comes to having snow be removed from the parking area.
That's it? I have a question.
Sure.
I believe there's an adjacent vacant property on Garden, am I correct?
Sort of, it's on Garden, it's fenced off because it's my next-door neighbor. So if you're looking at, if you're looking at three eighty-two Bellevle, there's a house to the right of three eighty-two.
Right.
And that property owner owns the property beyond his house
On Bellevle Avenue.
and behind it, back to Garden.
Oh, so that is, that surrounds you?
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if it was all one, that's why.
No, no, that's his.
That's all his, okay.
All the furniture.
Just asking, just asking. Second, well, no, I'll leave this to you, you have an architect, right?
I do.
Good, I'll ask the architect, or, or, or the.
Planner.
Yeah, either one.
Please do ask them many questions.
Especially since you're paying them.
Exactly.
This is jolly board, see, we have. All right, any, any other questions by members of the board of the witness? Any questions by members of the public of the witness, based upon testimony given? None? Okay, you may go to your next question.
Thanks, Mr. Malato.
Could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give, shall be the truth?
So help me God.
Could you state your names and by your last name, please?
Name is Frank, middle initial D, Malato, M I L E T O, fourteen Beaverbrook Drive, Long Valley, New Jersey. Registered architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen seventy-four. Continuously operated as such throughout the state, and I've been before this board a few times.
If Malato had been in front of this board, is your license still?
Yes, thank you.
Still tapped, your license?
And, Mr. Chairman and Counsel, Mr. Malato's only being presented as an architect, not as a planner. Not giving planning testimony, just describing the building. Okay, would you, Mr. Malato, please describe the existing site?
This site's an existing building, three stories, first level, second and third, second and third levels have residential apartments in. There are two apartments per floor. They are one-bedroom units. The lower level currently is vacant, and that's the space that we're proposing to convert to law offices. The apartment square footages.
You don't need to do that.
No, you don't.
Just address the proposed alterations on the first floor.
Proposed alterations are very minimal. Spaces exist generally, but we have, let me just go inside.
Of these, of these plans what we have, Frank?
The plans you're referring to, are they the same as the plans that were submitted to the board?
Yes, the same plans as submitted.
We're removing the bar, right?
Yeah.
As you said, it was minimal, I'm just kidding.
It is.
Well, you never know, they could always have a trick in there, what it takes.
I've never, I've never been there when it operated as a bar, but.
I'm saying, removing the bars.
Yeah, we're gonna remove the bars, and we're gonna install partition, non-bearing partitions, to create two private offices, a waiting room, a conference area, a cubicle for one of the employees, an reception area, a vestibule, and two bathrooms on that level. One bathroom, they're both going to be accessible, handicapped accessible.
Would you redo those lighting?
The exterior lighting or interior?
Exterior lighting.
Exterior lighting. There's currently a group of wall-mounted lighting fixtures, which will be rebuilt and replaced with new units so that they will like adequately light the exterior. Yeah, the parking lot lighting.
And how will waste of garbage generated be removed from the site?
There's a new receptacle dumpster area, I'll call it, on the exterior, four-foot-by-eight-foot refuge area, five-foot-high cyclone fence with vinyl stripes on it as requested or suggested by the staff.
And is there anyone printing the landscaping?
I'm sorry, anyone?
Is there room for any landscaping on the property?
Whatever there is will be planted with grass as requested. There's a small area in the rear of the building, in the parking area, next to the handicap spot. Other than that, it's all coverage existing. There'll be no additional pavement, no additional additions. The only thing we're gonna do is re-strike the existing lot with one barrier-free unit and two parking spaces, so totally three parking spaces, as many as we can fit.
So there's gonna be nothing changed, no additions to the building, just the alterations in order to make this a law office, and the improvements outside, you can just explain, is that correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions, it is witness.
Okay, Mr. Valano.
So just to be clear, you said minimal changes, right?
Right.
So we remove in the kitchen and just put the kitchenette?
Yeah, there's an existing kitchenette on that level, it's a mushroom.
Kitchenette or kitchen?
Kitchen.
Is it kitchenette?
Kitchen.
Because there was a bar and a restaurant, so I'm assuming there's a full-blown kitchen.
Mr. Malato, has some of that already been done?
Don't know. The client says yes, I'll believe him, I don't know, I did not enter the building.
You understand what I'm saying? It was a bar with a full-blown kitchen, and you're telling me minimal changes? In my head, what I'm thinking is, there's a full bar and there's a full kitchen, so.
They're being, I don't mean to testify, they're being removed or have been removed? Some of the work's already been done to start?
To me, that's not minimal.
Devolution.
So when we're revamping the whole space, the way I see it.
What I meant by minimal is there's no structural changes. There's gonna be removing of the equipment. There's no non-bearing, unbearing walls being removed, there's gonna be non-bearing partitions relocated according to our plan, nothing else, that's it. I consider that minimal.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you make these plans?
Did I prepare them? No, no, my staff did.
Your staff did?
Sure.
But you never went into place?
No.
How do you make plans without going into place?
The staff went.
Oh, the staff went into place?
Sure, they did.
But you're giving the testimony?
Sure. That's, that's common practice.
My suggestion?
Yes.
When you're gonna give testimony, you should go on the site.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
I appreciate it.
Because we've had another people, a number of people that give testimony coming in, and like you, you don't know what's in there. That's my point, that's exactly my point.
Okay.
Moving on, my next question is, I think it's Mr. Harrington's report regarding lighting and maintenance.
Right, that's what we did. We did provide both of those reports with this report.
So you are calling his recommendations or just?
He didn't give the mentions, I don't believe.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I should recall my applicant.
Whatever you suggest, clear it, there's all.
I prefer to do that, that way Mr. Valano's questions can be better answered.
I have no problem, whichever way you wish to proceed. And as long as Mr. Valano's satisfied, I'm satisfied.
The lawyer in me got itchy in the back row, so I wanted to come.
I feel the same.
After the, after the zigzag, this property or the first floor became the stone horse, right? So that was my father and my brother. And after my father passed away, the stone horse became somebody else's something or other. Then it became three eighty-two bar and grill. Then it became, you know, Joe's Auto Parts. Whatever it became, at some point, all of the equipment and the bar were auctioned off. So all the contents of the first floor were vacant, were eliminated, gone.
You don't notice, that's what I'm saying.
Gone, and that's why I came up.
For me, I'm thinking.
No, it was, it was all sold.
We walk into the right, there's a long bar, it goes around, there's a window, and a full kitchen.
Yep, all, all of that sold.
At least you were in there with the architect, wasn't you?
Well, well, that's not necessarily true, I mean, you were there in February.
Look, so that's what I'm remembering, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so at the time, which was a couple of years ago, fifteen-three, everything inside was sold off. There's nothing left but the wood on the walls. Obviously, anything that was in the kitchen was addressed insofar as, you know, the gas was tapped and the electric was done, but everything's not.
Thank you, Mr. Chiafulo.
Anything else I can help with?
Thank you.
That's good for me, it gives me a better picture.
Obviously, I have no further questions to the architect, and I think Mr. Chiafulo's answered Mr. Valano's questions.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mafucci.
Just one question, there is a sign hanging off the building?
That's gonna remain, they're just gonna change the face of the sign. It's an existing sign, just change it to the attorney's company.
The sign on the building, I assume it'll be similar to that, which is very nice, by the way.
The sign is what prompted the hole.
It's your sign.
Right, it is, it's my sign, and many moons ago.
Okay, doing a great job, I agree.
We, we put it up, and Mr. Di Lorenzo contacted us and said, hey, by the way, you can't do that. And so, of course, everyone called me and said, can you please go fix it? And that's why I'm here. So that's what actually prompted everything.
Yeah, you just put a cover over it.
Correct.
I thought, I thought, I said, Jesus, this place will have a business again.
It feels that way in my house.
No, but what I'm saying is, at least you know what's going on. I mean, I can't have testimony that don't know what's going on.
And that's why I'm here to supplement that testimony.
I, I, I think you should give most of the testimony.
I'd be happy to stand.
Next time, maybe you should bring your staff, that way we won't have all this going on.
I have the staff here.
Oh, you do?
Sure.
All right. Do you have any questions for the inside, any?
No, he answered my question.
Also, the staff is here, was there, the designer?
I didn't know we got from A to Z, he cleared it up.
Mr. Goff, who was the original architect?
Mr. Gottsle is the original architect, it's only changed through the zigzag, so...
He did a nice job of it.
Okay, now, the residents upstairs, we have four apartments.
Correct.
And I assume you're not going to be there at night?
No.
So they could use the three parking spaces plus what is like the handicap areas, which is really four apartments?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one more housekeeping question.
Sure.
Regarding additional property to get to a space, have you acquired from your neighbors? And are they willing to allow you to use any land that you can lease rent? I, and then need to ask that question.
Sure, I can speak to that. When it was the Stone Horse, many moons ago, my next-door neighbor Charlie, whose last name is escaping me, permitted us to use his...
At times.
At times, correct. And after that, we never asked Charlie again. However, there is one tenant in my building, Mr. Harris, who has been there the entire tenure of my ownership, who is very friendly with Charlie. And he has never parked, Mr. Harris has never parked his car anywhere but on Charlie's property. Because he never wanted to be a party to the community, hey, can I, you know, I'm pulling in and pulling out.
You don't want an agreement on your own that way? That you can acquire or rent.
I could absolutely speak with Charlie again.
I mean, I think it wouldn't hurt, I'm just saying that.
Well, he already permits use of his property for at least one of my tenants.
Yeah, I know. Okay. That's all question.
And not to be a witness, but I will. I'm very familiar with that neighborhood, having grown up around there. There's always parking on the street there, I'm guarding every corner.
No, I, no, I...
Except when it's a softball game across the street.
But as you know, you know, it's really a good idea to ask that question.
Yeah, right.
Now, now I have a question. You're an expert, I mean, you're a worker, I mean...
David's my associate.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
David P. Gottsle, G-O-D-S-A-L-L, at 685 St. Gettle, New Jersey.
Do you swear the comment you're about to make and testimony show me the truth?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, now, the question I have, and you're an architect, you're an architect.
He is an architect, he did, he did the plans.
Thank you. He did the plans. Okay, my question is, you have an old survey attached to the back of your plans?
Yes.
Dated 1999.
That was the survey that was given to us when we prepared the drawings in 2005.
Okay, now, on it, it says there's a mecanum driveway. There is no driveway, am I correct on Belleville Avenue?
No, we had created a handicap ramp.
And that's, and that's concrete, I suppose?
Correct.
Okay, the reason I ask the question is because it's, on the old one, it says a driveway, and I never knew there was a curb cut there or anything.
It is modest curb cut.
It is?
Well, to the question, it's an old...
Oh, okay, but it's not going to be used that way?
No.
Because I don't believe it could fit anything through there.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's the only question I have, but I'd rather ask somebody who's been there.
Very good.
Thank you. Any questions by members of the public of the witnesses that have given testimony? Any of the witnesses, since we keep on having multiple witnesses on this? No, okay, is there, I believe you have a plan?
I have one more witness.
One more witness?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
I most certainly do.
Good, did you state your name and spell your last name?
Certainly, good evening, commissioners, my name is George Whittle Williams, Williams spelled W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S.
I believe you appeared here and you've qualified as a planner.
Yes, and my license is still current.
Thank you, yes, okay, then you may proceed.
So we're going to accept Mr. Williams as an expert in the field of planning?
If I remember correctly, the last time Mr. Williams was here, he made a very good impression on the board.
Thank you.
As does his business partner.
Based on that?
I think he has a business partner.
I believe your business partner.
Based on that, you've been my witness about five times since then. Mr. Williams, would you tell the board what you did in order to prepare for your public hearing in this matter?
Certainly, we approached this application the way we approach every single land use application of which we're a part, and that is really just to begin with the review of the local land use documents. In this case, the Belleville Master Plan and the proposed master plan update, zoning ordinance, and all of that in the context of the municipal land use law. Of course, I've also reviewed the site plan and site plan application that are before you this evening. I've been to the site on several occasions, most recently this afternoon, because the exhibit we prepared, depending on the moment, we also had to go out and recertify all the pictures, so I've been to the site several times.
And did you review Mr. Harrington's report?
Yes, I did.
Would you give a planning overview of this application?
Certainly, you've already heard testimony from my colleague on the team, Mr. Miletto, just for record very quickly, this is an application to permit the law office on the ground floor what I'm going to loosely refer to as a mixed-use building. Meaning there are two floors of residential use above the ground floor, and if approved, we'd have the law office on the ground, on the ground floor. There are two dwelling units on each of the upper floors, and we have a parking lot, as you've heard described by the prior witness. This is a corner property known as 382-384 Belleville Avenue, and it's Belleville Avenue, and it's located in the RC District here in Belleville.
And would you review the relief that is being sought?
Certainly, as Counsel mentioned in his introductory comments, we are seeking basically three reliefs. There are two D variances. The first is to permit a use, that being the law office that is not among the permitted uses enumerated in your RC district. The second is to have two principal uses on the same lot, and the third is for parking.
And did you, I'm sorry, try again. Give your general planning issues.
Okay, and I'll submit the very simple exhibit after that. As we looked at site, discussed the project in the team, it became apparent to me, and I think I remember the zigzag, but I definitely remember the bar afterwards. This is a site with a long history of mixed use for, to this board's point and the zoning officer's point, two principal uses, restaurant, bar slash the residences above. And those uses have coexisted, coexisted in the RC district, as I said, for almost a half-century or more. There is parking behind the site. You heard testimony from the applicant that, quite honestly, you could fit easily four parking cars on that parking lot. I'll show some pictures in a moment. But what the design team is striving to do is to make sure that the stalls are compliant stalls. So now we have three, one of which will be handicap accessible parking stall. As you've heard from both the applicant and our other expert, Mr. Miletto, the remnants of previous uses have been or will be removed. There will be upgrades to the site, particularly the maneuverability on the parking lot, and there will be some landscaping, and I understand also planters to soften the property or beautify the property. From a planning perspective, it's interesting, because in my opinion, and I hope you will all agree, the proposed use as a law office will be far less intense than the previous use as a bar/restaurant. And that's going to be significant when I discuss the negative criteria as part of my cruise. Clearly, I would argue that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good because, quite, in point of fact, we will be de-intensified to use if you were to permit this application. The other thing is, very quickly, it's a niche office market, and you heard the discussion from the applicant about the practical or customary usage of this property if you were to approve it, limited site visits by both employees, employer, and clients. And so the impact on the neighborhood is negligible. But more importantly, it's an opportunity for shared parking, and that's recommended in your master plan as well. That is to say, when Mr. Shifulo's not there, the tenants park, and when the tenants are parking there, his and his staff are not there. I'll get into the proofs in a moment, but suffice it to say, in my professional opinion, there are ample special reasons and negative criteria in support of all the reliefs we're seeking.
Mark this A2. This is a report, Mr. Williams, or a...
This is a low-tech exhibit. It consists of a number of photographs of the site and surrounding area. You all know the site better than I do, but it'll just give some context for the remainder of my testimony.
Mr. Williams, would you please review the content of the document which was marked as A2?
Certainly, again, it's a series of photographs. The photographs were taken, why not, by myself this afternoon, because I had to retape them, and then a Google Earth aerial photograph. The Google Earth aerial photograph is on slide number two, and it really just serves to give some context of this site in the broader neighborhood context. It's a little bit hard to see, and I apologize for that, but there is a locator icon, the red icon on top of our site. But more importantly, you can tell our site, it's a corner location, and it's probably the largest rooftop in the area. That's a bit significant, because you can see that this particular site and structure are different than all of the other structures. Certainly on Garden, on Garden, the land development pattern is almost entirely lower-density residential. And on Belleville Avenue, the land pattern varies. It's our property on a corner lot, which I would submit to this board is appropriate for mixed use. And then it's got a residential development directly abutting our property to the right, if you're facing our site. Then there's a large vacant parcel next to that residential site, and there'll be pictures to follow. Across the street, as Counsel mentioned earlier, is the Belleville Park, and that park dominates the land use pattern on that side of Belleville Avenue. Slide number three, just a very close-up picture of our property, the C, two floors above the ground level. That ground level, in my opinion, not necessarily appropriate for residential use, A, because of how it's currently designed, but also because of the Belleville Avenue directly abutting our site, high-traffic area, a little difficult to market for a ground-level residential development. Next picture, slide number four, just to give you the side view. We found this picture worth sharing with you because of the distance between our property and the abutting residential dwelling. And you can see the canopy extends a bit, but from a layperson's perspective, there's a nice side distance between those two properties. Slide number five, the rear or another side view of our property. And this gives you a sense of where the parking lot is currently. You see the cyclone fence surrounding our lot, that shed that will be removed. And you can see it's got a decent size to the parking lot. Again, once we add a bit of landscaping, compliant stalls, we'll be able to fit legally three cars. But you see in this picture, it's a sizable parking lot on our property. Wrapping up this exhibit, the next picture shows the surrounding or adjacent properties. The first capturing that residential use that abuts us that I mentioned earlier. See, it's not in the best state of repair currently. And then the vacant lot next to it, it has a sign, it's a commercial sign on it. We could not tell from our field observation how it's used, but I would submit to this board, it's not used for residential purposes. It's either vacant or used for commercial use. Last, but not least, across the street is the park that I referenced earlier in my comments. And then a bit further down the street, at 340 Belleville Avenue, another mixed-use property on the corner, similar to what we're proposing, only they have retail on the ground level, residential above, but that is in a different zone district. So that's the general land development pattern in the area.
And would you review the proofs with regard to the variances?
Certainly, as this board knows, for both the D1 for the use and the D1 for multiple principal uses, the tests are the same. So I'm going to group them for the purposes of time and simplicity. Either way, as this board knows, we are required to establish both the affirmative criteria and a negative criteria. The affirmative criteria is established through what's called special reasons. Special reasons are showing that the use is inherently beneficial, it's particularly suited to the site. If you approve our release, it would advance purposes of zoning. And last but not least, if you denied our application, you would create an undue hardship to the applicant. In my professional opinion, and you'll hear my testimony second, certainly this application would advance the purposes of zoning. The site is particularly suited for the proposed use, and to the end of it, some negative criteria. In terms of the negative criteria, it's a two-pronged test. No substantial detriment to the public good, which means we're not going to hurt the character of the neighborhood or community. And number two, no substantial impairment to the zone plan, which means your land use element of the master plan or your zoning ordinance. So with that, I'll begin with the special reasons. In my professional opinion, if you were to grant our relief for the two D1 variances, you would advance several purposes of zoning. Sorry, but before I go there, one quick note. We are prepared to submit the proofs for a D1 use variances, but I would offer to this board, this is very similar to a D2 variances. That is, it's a change, intention of creation, expansion of a non-conforming use. We're going to present D1, but in terms of how you approach this, it's a pre-existing non-conformist use. This structure has always been mixed use, it's always had a commercial on the ground, residential above. What we're doing is changing the tendency, to be quite honest. But because of the zoning officer's very correct approach to this, we'll proceed with D1. First purpose of these, 4055D, that's two, would be subsection A. That's the first, and it's kind of a catch-all, but it's to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Again, it's the first, it's a bit of a catch-all. But in my professional opinion, if you were to grant our release to permit the two D1 variances, you would advance that purpose by allowing a building to remain viable and contribute to the vibrancy of the community, which is for the general welfare. Subsection G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space for public and private according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. In short, you would be advancing that subsection by allowing a use that's very appropriate for the site. You heard the applicant discuss why it suits his needs as a law office. And quite honestly, in my opinion, the commercial tenants on the first floor is a better fit than a residential tenant suit. Last but not least, subsection I, promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Typically, when you hear this section referred to, it's about the aesthetics of the building. In our case, there aren't many changes to the aesthetics or exterior of the building, but the second part, good civic design and arrangement, is key here. That is, if you were to approve our application, the site will be approved in terms of the parking lot, layout, design, and some additional landscaping. Albeit minimal landscaping, but you'll have compliant parking stalls now as opposed to the current condition, and you'll have some planters and plant teams. Finally, special reasons acknowledge that the advancement of a state policy can be considered. In my opinion, the New Jersey Smart Growth Policy and Principles would be advanced if you were to approve this application, because Smart Growth encourages compact, dense development, and more importantly, mixed use and walkable communities. Having a law office on the ground level will advance those principles by certainly advancing the mixed use part of Smart Growth Principles, but also eliminating what's currently kind of a dead space on that first floor.
Would you review the she-one and she-two proofs?
Certainly, I'll just add quickly that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use as well. In terms of the negative criteria, there's no substantial detriment to the public good, again, less intense. And in terms of impairment to the zone plan, no impairment. In fact, the master plan does recommend shared parking. It recommends a Washington Street, but the concept is transferable because of the type of thoroughfare that Belleville Avenue is, mixed use. And last but not least, the new master plan, soon to be adopted, recommends that multiple principal uses on the same lot be permitted. At council's guidance, I'm moving to the parking now, C1 for the parking, and then C2, in my opinion, both would be appropriate. C1 allows a board to consider hardship. In my professional opinion, whether you were approving a residential unit on the ground floor or commercially on the ground floor, our site could not accommodate the number of parking spaces required because of the building thereon and the limited parking space. So there is some hardship to be considered in a C1 context. But more importantly, it's my opinion that the C2 context is really appropriate, given the description that the applicant has given you about the nature of his office use, the availability of on-street parking, although we're not counting that, but certainly the shared parking situation that exists now, it could continue perpetuating, no matter who the tenant would be on that site. There's significant land use literature that supports the idea of rightsizing parking for the use. There's a court case, Valenti v. Seakin, that suggests that if this board agrees with the testimony you've heard about the actual parking demand for the use or uses, you can consider the relief. In this case, we submit that the actual parking demand for both uses, the law office and the residences, is less than the 15 spaces that are required for the site. And even if we reduce our current accommodation for four parking spaces to three, we submit that that's more than enough to actually satisfy the real parking demand, particularly if you take into consideration the shared parking analysis or concept, excuse me. Under the Kaufman case, there's a couple of steps. I'm going to walk them very quickly. First, it has to apply to a specific piece of property. This property, again, is unique because of its corner location, the availability of parking elsewhere, but more importantly, the possibility of the shared parking. That the purposes of municipal land use law would be advanced. I mentioned the purposes of law, municipal land use law, under the D variances. The same would apply, but more importantly, the advancement of a state policy, and that policy being Smart Growth, would be advanced if you were to grant the parking variances. It can be granted without substantial detriment. In my opinion, there will be no detriment, again, far less intense than the prior uses, and given the testimony of our applicant, there will be no impact on the surrounding community whatsoever. So therefore, no substantial detriment. And finally, the benefits of the deviation from the strict application of your code far outweigh any detriment. Here again, rightsizing the parking demand with the parking supply, advancing the purposes of your master plan, which suggests that shared parking is appropriate and that there will be no detriment. So in my final opinion, this board can comfortably grant the parking variance because it meets both the C1 and the C2 criteria.
You've already given your conclusions. Nothing further, am I correct?
Nope, but I'm available for questions.
Mr. Chairman. Any questions, my members of the board of the witness?
Just one quick question.
Yes.
Just to confirm, you mentioned that the shed in the back of the building, the small shed, is going to be removed?
That is correct.
It's going to be removed. So that'll open up the back, where you can more turn over the parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question.
Our way, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's in your realm. Would you say that a law office is a less intensive use than a residence?
I most definitely would.
Oh, I know he said it, but I want to get it on the record. Now it's on the record. Okay. Anything else, my members of the board, any questions? Any questions by the public of our witnesses? No questions. Does, you have any more witnesses?
I have no further witnesses. Any very brief submission?
Any members of the public wish to give testimony on this application? Seeing none, Mr. Gashen, would you like to sum up on this?
Very brief, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I have to say brief.
We got two Ds, but these are unique Ds. As George pointed out, it's really not a D1. We're not introducing a new discordant use. We're introducing a less discordant use, in fact, one that clearly fits in the neighborhood. And as to the issue of two principal uses, there's already been two principal uses. All my life, there's been two principal uses in that building. So we're not changing that also. So what we're doing here is substantially improving the situation by putting a much less intense use. Think about what the zigzag was like in its prime, and think about what kind of law office this is going to be. One lawyer, two other employees, a guy who flies around the country, puts 100,000 miles in the air, he's not even there much. So a perfect use for this location. There is obviously a parking shortfall, but we're not going to, he doesn't see clients at this location, there's very little that happens here, and this is a big plus, a big benefit to the community, reducing the parking demand. In addition, all our lives, we know that there's been parking spaces available on Belleville Avenue and parking spaces on Garden Avenue. Mr. Milano wants a request to be made to the neighbor. My client will certainly do that. The shared parking works out perfectly. The couple of employees at the office can park in that little lot in the back if they want to, but they also could park on the street, but at night, they're gone, and the residents will get to use it. As to the bulk variances, they are pre-existing. We're not expanding anything. In fact, we're removing the shed in the rear yard and allowing more room for parking. Mr. Williams pointed out, you could use C1, in that is a hardship, because that's the way the property is, that's the way it exists, it's been there forever. You can use C2, certainly because the benefits outweigh the detriment because of the less intense use that this building will be put to. So I think the proof has been clear that this application should be approved, even though there's the D2 variances. Again, if we waited a month or two, there'd be only one D variance, and that one would be really a reduction in intensity of the use. And the bulk variances are pre-existing, can't be changed, been there forever. So I thank the board for their time and attention.
Remember something, board.
Simple permit. Only because I'm familiar with what it used to be like.
You mean the bar?
Yeah, I mean that, the fact that it was a restaurant bar, and I grew up...
I want to ask you a question about that. When the bar was there, was the entrance on the corner?
Just the bar?
Yeah.
Zigzag or no?
Zigzag. Same entrance as there.
Same entrance, and there's one in the back, too.
I thought that was one.
There was an entrance on Garden Avenue, too.
Right, yeah, there was two.
Right at the corner of the building.
At the corner, that's why, that's why.
I went into the dining room.
Not that I was there, but...
That's where it used to be.
Right. That's where the dining room.
I only went there for a few minutes.
The dining room.
More than a restaurant.
I just hang out there. Or the zigzag, it's both.
Okay, so from my perspective, remembering what I remember about parking, you know, this is substantially way less intense.
I agree.
Yeah, even when I went to the Stone Horse, it still was, still is less intense. But it's really not...
Are you making a motion?
Making a motion to approve what the hours that will testify to and the request that I asked for.
Do you have the hours now? Let's get this rolling.
Yeah, got the shed in the rear coming down.
Yeah.
The hours, I believe, were 10:00 AM.
Maybe not.
Mrs. Shapley said four or five.
Can we please not make it that restrictive in case that, he said 10 to 4 or 5, but can we, it's a law office, I mean, people not 9:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock?
Well, how late do you want to make?
It's 9 to 6.
9 to 6 is okay. I certainly... I have no problem with 9 to 6.
I don't hear a lot, I was only reiterating what was put on my...
I understand, thank you.
So 9 to 6, is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
9 to 6, I like it as a warehouse.
Five operation.
I like the good faith effort, the ask for parking for the minute. He testified, and it required about the usage of the other lot by his neighbor for parking.
For additional parking.
Right. At least we can do that, that would appreciate it.
Yes, I see no problem with that either. That's only a first. Okay. So may, motion made by Mr. Milano with conditions, seconded by Mr. Giordano. Clark called a roll with everyone, except for Barbara. I'll make it easy, so I can get her name right.
Caruso.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Lefucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes, approved 7 to 0.
Thank you, and again, that was a good faith effort, not a condition that...
Yes.
Can I ask one more question? I have a lot of nerves, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I know you do.
Is it possible to consider the communication in number seven, and I'll get out of here?
Is that all you want to know? Yeah. Can I drink much, please?
No, of course not. 10-minute break.
There'll be an adjournment for 10, or recess for 10 minutes. The regular meeting of the zoning available, the available zoning board of adjustment for April 5, 2018 is now back in session. We will go over the resolutions that we memorialized.
Okay. Matter of Kevin Zane, 312 Washington Avenue, application ZB 2017-023.
Yeah.
Casa.
Yes.
Lefucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
And show that Giordano's side by Gilla. Application matter of 6569 North Avenue LLC, ZB 2017-019.
Yeah.
Lefucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
And let the record show that Giordano's side also indeed is a lot.
Communications, we actually have two things here. We have a ZB 2015-28 Empire Medical Management Limited Liability Company or Corporation, neither one. 195 Cortlandt Street is requesting an additional one-year extension from February 3, 2018 to February 3, 2019 on their site plan approval. Do I have to read the whole letter or not?
No.
Okay. So we just...
Bob is here.
Bob is here, right, okay. So, why, do you have to say it again?
I don't, only if you need me to.
I'm just going to him. No, we've handled these types of matters before. They need an extra year, I'm assuming it's...
Had to do with financing. They now have finance. They had a lot of difficulty getting financing, and now have a loan from Citibank.
There's one paragraph I want to read. The final site plan in question was approved by the available zoning board of adjustment at its January 7, 2016 meeting, and memorialized by its February 4, 2016 meeting. I have enclosed here a copy of the said resolution for approval for your review, counting from February 4, 2016. The original two-year extension expired on February 3, 2018. Again, we are requesting an additional one-year extension from February 3 of 2018 to run through February 3, 2019. And I believe, according to Mr. Rego, no notice has to be given. So, could I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Milano, seconded by Mr. Caruso, Clark called a roll.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Losso, yes. Lefucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
I will do a resolution at the next meeting on this, so it's...
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything else?
Yes, we have the last case. The last case on the agenda is ZB... Yes, let's do the annual report first. We have the annual report. Motion to approve the annual report.
Motion to make the...
Motion made by Caruso, seconded by Milano. Clark called a roll.
Yeah.
All right, here. All right, you know what? Let's see if, we'll do this later.
No.
It's just a list of cases we did. For the year, for 2017. We have to do a report, we have to approve it, and send it to the council, the planning board, I believe somebody else gets it.
Every year.
Does anybody else get it?
So I have a motion and a second.
Who gets that?
Council and planning.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
We have that.
Oh, so you have that, we all have that, okay. All right, so motion made and seconded, Clark called a roll.
Caruso.
Yes.
Casa.
Yes.
Losso, yes. Lefucci.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Del Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, that's all approved. Now, the last case on the agenda is ZB 2018-01, 326-328 Franklin Avenue, Steve Vuardi. The applicant is seeking to convert the existing mixed-use structure back to its original use as a four-family building.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So it's a privilege to be here. I'm here on the application of 326-328 Franklin Avenue for my client, Mr. Stephen Buoneri. I am Marina Perna, attorney on the application, with offices at 189 Franklin Avenue, not the New Jersey. In this application this evening, we're seeking two variances. One is a D variance for density, the other one has to do with parking and a series of dimensional deficiencies which pre-existed this application. With that, I'd like to call my first witness, which is the owner of the property, Mr. Stephen Buoneri.
Are you and I okay with notice and publication?
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, shall be the truth?
I do.
Would you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Sir, Stephen Buoneri, G-U-A-R-N-E-R-I.
Thank you.
Mr. Buoneri, please state the board's address for the record.
111 Walnut Street, Bluefield, New Jersey.
Thank you. You are the owner of the subject property, am I correct?
Yes.
How long have you owned the property for?
About 34 years, since 1984.
And when you purchased the property, describe the property for me, was it consistent?
It's a four-family duplex, one-bedroom apartments in each unit. It's separate entrances, you have a front entrance and a rear entrance, or exit. And they have separate utilities, all floors, and with the exception of the water. There's one water service on the 326 side and one water service on the 328, that's the two floors.
And four bedrooms, but that pre-existed your purchase. That was the original use in 1929, am I correct?
That's correct.
But when you bought the building, what were the various respective uses?
There was three families, three dwelling units, and one...
And one-bedroom apartments?
One-bedroom apartments.
And then?
And one dental office.
And that dental office, at the time you purchased it?
Yes.
It was legally inherited by the predecessor owner, to your knowledge?
Correct.
And when did that use cease to exist?
2003, about when the dental office...
He left, and just retired or left?
In 2003, yeah. I acquired in 1984.
And thereafter, did you have an opportunity to lease it to another type of office or agency?
I did. I leased it to like a computer office for about two years, 24 months.
And so that would bring us to about 2005, and what happened thereafter?
Couldn't really...
At all?
No, I couldn't...
What efforts did you make to rent the property?
I have a sign in the window, I've had it in the newspaper, and I've got multiple calls, and I still get calls. And the people say, "I'm here to rent the apartment." And the sign says, "Office," said on there. I guess they're still trying to, you know...
And is that the same ability that you would attempt in the event you had an agency of the apartment? What's your typical practice when you have to rent the apartment? What do you do?
That's just what I would do, put an ad in the paper, put a sign in the window. It's highly visible because it's right on Franklin Avenue. And there is a, right down, two doors down, next to the chandelier, used to be a real estate office, Montell Agency used to be. And they had, I remember it was an optical office, and they also, she had the real estate office right there as well. And they, they didn't end up renting it out either as an office. They had that...
And so they requested a similar type of release, am I correct?
Correct.
That you requested to not have this door. That you requested tonight at this door.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the parking situation on the property, because I know that's always such a matter of great interest to the board. Describe the characteristics of your driveway to the left of the property.
Okay, and I only have about eight feet of the driveway.
Width?
Width, width-wise, from the house. And then the, my neighbor next door has the other five feet, okay? Then it narrows down, it tapers down to the end of the driveway to about seven and a half feet.
And is that as you're approaching the rear of the structure of...
Yes, as we approach the rear.
So you really can't fit a standard-sized car at the end of the driveway?
No, it's very difficult, especially if you got like an SUV or something. And in the beginning, you got the utilities on the side of the house sticking out, and you have to be very careful. Otherwise, if you try to go down, you'll scrape it, you'll scrape the car and scrape the building.
Did you attempt to secure an easement with your neighbor to work out some issue seeing if you could park jointly with any portions in the driveway for additional parking on yours?
I did. I spoke to him twice, and he says, "Do what you want, but on your side of the property," because he has a driveway on his other side of the house, on his family next door, he has...
So he won't let you drive through?
Well, as long as I stay on my side, and it's hard to stay, you know, on that deep foot, if you're going down that driveway, it tapers down.
No, I understand that, but how does he know? Well, he's watching people driving.
But, the problem would occur when you're parked, correct? They would be basically parked on his property if your parking over way toward the end of the building.
Right, as it narrows down.
And that's what he does, he doesn't mind you backing in and out, am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
How many cars can fit on the end of the driveway now?
I'd say about, if you have a compact car, maybe three or, three or four, I would say, you know, if you're at the very edge, you know, by the sidewalk, and then you come in a little bit more because it's starting to narrow and down, then maybe two compact cars, maybe one or two.
Would it be fair to say that comfortably three cars depart to standard size and one compact?
Yeah, I would say.
So none of them can get into the yard without going onto his property? And is his property paid?
No.
Oh, it isn't paid? Oh, okay. Now I understand.
Your tenants currently, how many cars do they have? What is their situation like because there's demand for parking?
I have three tenants, all kind of tenants.
Residential tenants?
Residential tenants, and one's been there 21 years, the other one's there 16 years, and the other one's got a year and a half.
And how many have cars?
Two.
So only two of the three. And if the third one were to have a car, and if there were to be a full-size car, not a compact car, where would that third car park?
Some, they park on the, on the street Continental across the street, they park right there.
Is that been a long, three, the same practice of the people that one of these apartments on Franklin Avenue, they typically park there overnight?
Yeah, my tenants have parked there. Occasionally, sometimes it's tough to pull out, you know, and they park over there on Continental.
And other tenants that you're aware of, in next-door neighbors, I know you have a building next door to you, nine apartments, like, they park across?
They could, I don't, I don't check on everybody's cars, so...
Tell me, Mr. Buoneri, we submitted as part of our application packet a sketch that shows that if this board were to approve your variances so that you can reconvert the office back to an apartment on the ground floor, what do you intend to do with that downstairs floor? Can you describe to us what your sketch indicates? We see some solid lines, we see some dotted lines, describe those, please.
Well, as it says on the sketch here, the heavy lines are the proposed partitions that'll be going up, you know, for the space.
Sheen part partition?
Yeah, the walls, I'll, and the dotted lines are the ones that are coming out.
Are any of those dotted lines weight-bearing walls?
No.
Do they go to the ceiling or they go suspended socket? Can you describe it for us?
It's a, there is a central air, so it's a drop ceiling. So they only go up to the drop ceiling, all the walls you see there, so they're not weight-bearing walls.
And originally, when the dentist had, I guess, with the, with her before your ownership, but there's plumbing behind the wall for prior...
Oh, yeah.
...kitchen that used to be there historically?
Yep, sometimes you can see the stubouts coming out from where, you know, where there was a sink over there, and where you had the dental chairs, there's stubouts over there, so, and...
And it would be your intention to restore the kitchen to its original site and purpose?
Yes.
If you were to receive the approvals from this board tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
I have nothing further.
Questions? I have one.
Yes, please.
I see from the sketch it's going to be a one-bedroom apartment. Is the other three apartments also one-bedroom?
Yes.
Can I ask, just so I understand, from what I've read and what you've testified to, from 1929, this was built, to about 1972, it was four-family. And from '72 to 2003...
To the present.
It was orthodontist dentist.
Yeah, to the present.
Since then, there's nothing, I want to go back to the apartment.
So you've not been able to rent it for years?
With the exception of the computer.
There's a question on the original application.
Yes.
It says, seems interesting, this is Mr. Di Lorenzo's report. Valman represents the history of the tax record. Years, good. 1940 to 1971, four-family. 1972 to the present, three-family and one-floor converted to office. Permit history, and she just brought this up, it was a good question. 1929, four-family, permit-type two-car garage. Where did this come from?
I've never seen a garage there, ever.
They must have knocked it down, Joe.
They probably demolished it prior to 1970.
And in '72, there was a permit to convert the apartment to an orthodontist office. '73, certificate of occupancy for that. And 19, oh, 1980, demolish one-car garage.
I see that. But if you see my...
So you demolished the garage?
No, if you've seen the survey...
You didn't have it.
That was, when I purchased it, there was no garage.
There wasn't.
No, there's the survey.
I was just saying, because it says a permit in 1980, that's why... After it was demolished. You purchased it after it was demolished. And you bought it what year?
Seventeen...
Eighty-four, okay, it was demolished already, all right, it was already demolished, all right. No problem. Okay, now that we got that all cleared up, any other member, yes, Mr. Sheldon?
I have a question for you. Earlier, you mentioned that due to the narrowness of your driveway, people have to be very careful, and you said that there's a possibility of hitting meters, electrical meters?
Well, you know, the, the glass meters that stick out on the side, you know, because they come out a little bit when you're coming down the driveway, if you got a SUV, you know, big mirrors and stuff like that, you could scrape it coming in. And as you're going down the driveway towards the end, it starts narrowing down. If I hook my side, you'll scrape it, you know, you'll scrape the house and you'll scrape...
It seems like that would be a major safety concern, if a car were to hit that meter, it may contact, you've got, you know, 220-volt supply line there.
Well, the wall comes out in the front, there's like a little wall, so it does, it's like a curvy to keep you away, you know?
There is, there is some volume...
Yeah, it sticks out, just a little bit into the driveway to keep you angled straight till you got past that, then it would start narrowing down. But just in the beginning, you know, nobody ever has, when the dentist was there, he parked in the driveway, it never had a problem.
I just want to make sure that there's no possibility of any motorist having contact with your electrical service. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, five members of the board? No other questions, five members of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Buoneri, and at this point, I'd like to offer my expert planner, Mr. Paul Baumann.
And as long as he hasn't lost his license, he's allowed to...
I'm still good.
Good. Could you raise your right hand, please? Regarding this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
And spell your, state your names, spell your last name, please.
Paul Baumann, the last name is spelled B as in boy, A-U-M-A-N.
And you're being called as a planner?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Planner, you've been before this board before, am I correct?
Yes.
So I will recognize my expert property.
That's why he's got no problem. We've seen him so much, it isn't funny.
Mr. Baumann, you did have an opportunity to visit the site, am I correct?
Yes.
You didn't send an employee there, did you?
No.
Oh, boy.
I had to get that in.
Sent, need myself and I, all three of us.
So you're personally familiar with this site?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you, Mr. Baumann, please submit to the board your proof, your analysis and your discussions pertaining to the relief that we're seeking, and to answer the in-the-process and the questions posed by Mr. Harris and his sense of authority, so that we satisfy the board and the council.
Basically, the board knows what Mr. Harris wrote in his report, and I can confirm what he said to you on paper. We need a D5 variance for density, and we need 70C variances for various setbacks, lock coverage, et cetera.
Are they all pre-existing?
Those are all pre-existing conditions, including parking, which you've already heard Mr. Buoneri discuss, but that is another variance that needs to be further discussed with Mr. Harris's report. So I'm going to go over the key, which is the D5 variance, the positive and negative criteria, because that's really the crux of the matter. Parking is ancillary, but it is what it is.
Thank you. That's the D2A?
Yeah, the positive criteria for the density five variance, I believe there are two things that the variance will fulfill if the board grants it under NJSA 4055D-2, subsection A, which promotes the general welfare. I believe by eliminating this longstanding vacancy of this office, it will promote the general welfare when it can be rented as a residential unit. The variance also fulfills section 2B of that same statute, which promotes fire safety, because it's going to be an enforcement issue where the apartment will have to be compliant with today's construction and fire codes under the purview of Mr. Di Lorenzo's department. So I believe those two keys to granting the variance justify the positive criteria for... It was originally constructed as a four-family dwelling. Building and the site were well-suited for the permitted use, which it would be under today's ordinance as a four-family, multifamily dwelling. And it's located in a zone where it should be located, it's surrounded by other multifamily uses, and the site will remain unchanged, only for the interior alterations, there's no exterior proposed changes, so what you see there today will be there after construction of the apartment, will be invisible changes to the public.
Thank you.
Concerning the negative criteria for the granting of the D variance, it can be granted, and there's two prongs to the variance criteria for the negative. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and I contest that the building was used as a four-family unit, as has already been documented from 1929 when it was constructed, to 1972. At that point, a prior owner was able to secure approvals to convert one of the four apartments into a dental office, and that carried forth, going back for some period of time, as Mr. Buoneri described to you, it was used by both the dentist and then subsequently a PC guru, and then since 2003, it's been vacant. So this variance can be granted to bring it back to its original state as a four-family, which was its intended original purpose, and it's going to be compliant with the zone that it's located in, so there's really no detriment to the public good by doing that variance in that regard. The variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan, which is the master plan in the zoning ordinance, because it's consistent with the multifamily zone that it's located in. There certainly isn't going to be, going to be any detriment to either the zone plan, which keeps it in a RC zone, and the zoning ordinance, which is already documented that it's in. Now, the dimensional variances, I believe the board can grant as section 70C1, where it's really hardship situations, there's nothing the applicant can do to change and eliminate, or in this case, he's not going to be able to improve nor exacerbate. It is what it is, it's been that way, it's going to continue to be that way if the board grants the variance or not. Concerning the parking variance, which is the most discussable issue that the board has to render its opinion to, as well as the D variance, you heard Mr. Buoneri explain to you the limitations, and you see it on his survey, he really has a limited amount of space that he can park cars on the site. It's been that way since the building was created. So there's nothing new in terms of, he can't acquire any additional land, the adjacent owner won't even give him an easement so that he could further encroach and get better parking access, which would have given him access to his rear yard. Probabilistically, and although I can't prove it document-wise, that must have been where the garage that was alluded to earlier was located at some point in time. How it was accessed, that's debatable. We don't know that it was allowed, it may have been just an informal approachment. We don't know what happened to the garage, whether it was demolished because it was dilapidated or whether it was demolished because ownership of the adjoining property said, "Hey, you're crossing my boundary, you can't use that. You can't use my property to get to your garage." I don't know that history, was not able to be researched from my vantage point. So from most criteria of what can be done, there's very little that can be done. The historic usage of parking in that area has been across the street of Continental Avenue and along Franklin Avenue for the occupants of this building. There hasn't been any issues with parking under Mr. Buoneri's ownership. He's only had three apartments since he's owned the building, and there's only two car owners within those three apartments, so it's been a non-issue. He has the ability to control future occupancy by who he tells their story to concerning limitations of parking, so he isn't going to probably get much of anybody who has a family situation or multi-cars. The fact that there is a bus stop directly in front of his property lends itself to today's newest drivers. People don't want to have cars if they live in or work in Jersey City, Hoboken, New York City, they'd rather take public transportation than owning a car that they can't park anywhere conveniently and pay the insurance rates that New Jersey's insurance companies are charging. So that's the wave of the future, as I see it as a planner. And for those reasons, I believe the board can sanction a variance for the parking deficit, since there really isn't a good solution other than street parking, which is permitted in that neighborhood.
Mr. Baumann, in your opinion, if today he were to rent it to another dentist or another medical group, would it put a further stress on the parking situation than a one-bedroom apartment, is that correct?
Yes, because the parking requirements, according to Level's code as well as RSIS, would exceed what this capacity is in reality on the property as it is. So by changing the use from a office to a residence, there's a slight improvement on the deficit, but either way, it's a deficit, and it can't really be changed or overcome.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Questions from, I have no further questions, maybe the board?
I have a question. Mr. Valado, you have any questions?
Yeah, I want to just follow up on his, his last statement.
Go ahead.
So, just for my own, I was wondering myself, what is the difference between the one-bedroomed apartment versus the orthodontist? Just for my own application.
I didn't check the square footage of the apartment, so it's probably going to be a fraction or maybe one additional parking space that would be required for the dentist to remain there as a use.
So it would be, if it's, if it's anything, it's a tad more for the orthodontist than it is, that's your testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
And I think Mr. Harris's report confirms that as well.
Is that right to you, Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
That was my question.
I have one question. Go ahead. From...
From the rear of the building to the rear property line, how much distance is it? I'll have to copy the survey.
I'm sorry, sir. Thumb nail. It's not pickled very well. One.
For around thirty feet. Around thirty feet? The reason I brought it up, I look within five hundred feet of that location. Drive to the apartment building to the right, to Redford Point? That just be parking. So that might have been how they got to it. But anyway, it was parking along the adjacent lot.
What is unusual, at the time Mr. Graneri bought this, the lot line configurations are not what they are today. There were, there were three lots involved in this property at one time when Mr. Graneri bought it back in nineteen eighty-four. They've changed the lot lines, they've eliminated some of them. But it's, maybe because that lot line configuration also coincided with some of the development here, maybe that's how the garage became obsolete and was demolished. But I, I don't know the history, I couldn't find any clues to...
My family moved here in nineteen forty-seven, so I was young then. But from nineteen fifty on, for quite a while, there was parking adjacent to it. I don't know where the property lines were, but there was parking there.
Was the garage, I'm sorry, was the garage in that corner or was it...
I never went to the back, so I don't know.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Well, the only thing I wanna say is, as a dental office with three dental chairs, I would consider there would be a minimum of five employees, receptionist, two dental assistants, and at least a dentist. That's the minimum that there would be there.
And...
Yeah, so, right, then you'll have the patients, you would have at least three patients being worked on at the same time, plus who knows who's in the waiting room, waiting to be taken care of. So you're talking about up to ten people in there at the same time.
They give a testimony or anything?
No, I'm saying, based upon the diagram that there was three dental chairs, and that's a normal amount. Where we're changing it to maybe, since it's a one-bedroom, you may have two people living there, that's it. Okay, so I did, so I think it's a very less intensive use.
Yes, but I was only looking at it from the parking standpoint. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right, Chairman.
That's great testimony.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bellano knows, I enjoy that.
He's not being paid for it, no.
No, he has a vacation.
Well, I give my free advice.
Thank you.
Free testimony.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any members of the public who wish to testify on this case? Somebody, why, you still have a question, Mr. Allen?
No, I'm ready.
Oh, okay. Yes, yeah, you could ask them all, or since that's the testimony, I think part of... You wanna sum up first, or not? You're satisfied?
I'm satisfied with the testimony presented, at least I am by my client and also by my expert, that the conditions that were set forth in Mr. Harris's report, or the comments of Mr. Di Lorenzo's, and the questions of this board have been satisfied that this is a less intensive use, and it should be, I plead with this board to restore it back to its original use.
I like Ms. Purna, she moves her right along. Okay, I would, I, unless you wanna make a motion?
No, I'm just saying, no.
I'll make a motion.
No, I'm just giving up what I see.
Yes.
But we've been doing discussion first, right?
Yes, we're doing discussion.
Oh, okay.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, I see three things here. One, obviously, we choose as a four-family.
That's original.
Even if the party... Even if the party was neutral between the orthodontist and the department, it's the same thing. And so I'm not even arguing about it. And lastly, to me, it would be a hardship to do nothing and not allow that to be utilized at a point. And lastly, we did approve something similar, even though it does not bind us.
I think it was right next door.
It is.
Two buildings down.
Two buildings down?
It doesn't bind us to do the same, because it's not exactly the same scenario, and it's similar. But I think, you know, approval of this would be not a problem.
And, yeah, I have no problem with the approval as long as it's listed as a one-bedroom.
So I just want, one question about our counsel, is the, maybe Frankie could chime in as well. Is the fact that they went for a permit back in nineteen seventy-two, whatever, and made it an orthodontist, does that consider the four-family use abandoned, Frankie?
Would that, it will?
The fact that they went for a permit to use it as an orthodontist, right? Does that abandon the use as a four-family?
Yes, I think so.
That's all, I just wanted to make sure.
And now, by the approval tonight, we're abandoning the use of the commercial.
Right, I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
So the commercial use is gonna be abandoned if we approve this?
So I personally don't have any, any issue with the application for the following reason, I just put on a letter.
And I concur, and I could, I could just say, it's definitely a very less intensive use going from an orthodontics office to a one-bedroom, as long as it's listed as a one-bedroom. Used, you know, and used as a one-bedroom. So I think that should be part of the resolution that we're approving it as a one-bedroom, and technically, the building is now gonna be four one-bedroom apartments, because that's the testimony that was given. So we'll incorporate that into the resolution. Any problem with that, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with the conditions, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk, call the roll.
Caruso?
Yes.
Fassa?
Yes.
Lozo?
Yes.
Lucucci?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Alaya?
Yes.
I'll hear you.
Yes, approve seven to none.
Thank you.
Every case is all approved, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Adjourned.